Next item is a study session regarding application and review procedures for projects proposed pursuant to Senate Bill 35. Application number CP 2019-04. Applicant: City of Cupertino, Location: Citywide. Can we have our staff report? Or who is the staff member?
Good evening.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Hi, this is Caitlin Brown with the City Attorney's Office. And I'm here to talk to you all today and ask in this study session that you review the draft procedures and application package for the SB 35 projects and provide direction regarding these materials. The final draft resolution will be presented to the council to be considered and adopted at a later meeting. So just a roadmap of what I'm going to talk about in this presentation. I'm going to do an overview of SB 35 and the recent amendments. I'll do an overview of the Housing and Community Development's SB 35 guidelines. And then I'll talk about the city's draft resolution with procedures for reviewing and processing SB 35 applications. This includes an eligibility checklist and a separate proposed application forms that will be maintained by the Planning Department. The procedures and eligibility checklist will be adopted via resolution, and the application forms included in the packet will not be formally adopted. So what is SB 35? It was passed in 2017 and became effective in 2018. And it requires the city to use streamlined ministerial review process for certain multifamily housing developments that meet the city's objective standards and SB 35's objective planning standards, provide at least half of the housing as affordable to low-income households, and meet other wage and labor requirements. And it imposes quite strict timelines. At most, the city has 180 days from the application submission to final approval and can have as little as 90 days for a housing development that proposes 150 or fewer housing units. SB 35 has been twice amended. It was most recently amended on July 31 of this year and by AB 101. AB 101 amended two of the objective planning standards. SB 35 requires that in mixed-use developments, 2/3 of the gross square footage must be residential. And AB 101 added a sentence stating that additional density and/or waivers or concessions granted pursuant to the density bonus law are included when a city calculates this square footage. It also -- SB 35 also requires that projects cited on hazardous waste sites are ineligible for SB 35 streamlining unless they have been cleared for residential or residential mixed uses. And AB 101 amended this provision to allow the State Department of Public Health, the State Water Resources Control Board, or the Department of Toxic Substances Control to clear the site. And we have provided a supplemental staff report on these amendments and tracked relevant changes to the documents that you have in your packet.
Oh, can I just say, the hazardous waste site, that's not retroactive, right? So the AB 101 is not retroactive to previously submitted projects?
No, the changes will only be -- will only be prospective going forward.
All right, thank you.
It becomes applicable immediately going forward.
Okay.
So it's --
Could I just say this is --
-- effective immediately, not like January 1st, 2019, like other bills?
That's correct, because it was a budget trailer bill.
Yes.
Okay.
The housing -- SB 35 allows the Department of Housing and Community Development to adopt guidelines to implement the uniform standards and supplement or clarify the terms and standards provided by SB 35. These guidelines apply prospectively to projects proposed after January 1st, 2019. And while they're called guidelines, they're formally adopted regulations which have the same dignity as statutes. The guidelines incorporate the 2018 amendments to the law but have not been updated, obviously, to reflect the very recent 2019 amendments. And we're here tonight in part because of these guidelines, which directed local governments to provide information about their SB 35 process and the materials required for an application. We're also here because the city's fiscal year 2019-2020 work program directed the city to develop procedures for mandated streamlined project approvals. This was a priority-setting item in the Community Livability section of the work program. So turning now to the process we're proposing tonight. In order to apply for a project under SB 35, the applicant must submit an SB 35 application, a certification that they will comply with specific eligibility requirements regarding deed restrictions, prevailing wage and labor requirements. And they must also submit an application material specified in the application checklist. The city will post the application on the city's webpage within two business days and keep it updated throughout the application process. So once an application has been submitted, city staff will determine if the application is complete within five business days. And the city will deny the application if it is incomplete. But if the application is complete, the Department of Community Development will make an initial written determination of the proposed project's consistency with the objective planning standards. The city council and the Planning Commission will then hold a noticed, open, and public oversight meeting to assess the project's compliance with the required objective planning standards. The meeting will also be noticed pursuant to the municipal codes requirement for development permits. The council and Planning Commission will also review any application for a subdivision map at this meeting. The review meeting will focus only on objective standards and will be held at least five days before the expiration of the consistency review period. And we're proposing a joint hearing because of the tight timelines laid out in SB 35. Consistency determination must be made within either 60 or 90 days, depending on the size of the development. After the joint meeting and before the end of the 60 or 90 days, the city manager will send the applicant a letter stating either that the project is consistent with objective planning standards or explaining which standard or standards the project conflicts with. If the project is sent a letter saying that it is consistent with the planning standards, then the city will use the remaining time to finalize the approval documents and any standard conditions of approval that are objective and broadly applicable to development within the city. And they'll do this within 90 or 180 days, depending on the size of the development. On the other hand, if the project is inconsistent with any of the objective planning standards, the city will deny the application. And the applicant may choose to submit a corrected or revised application, and this will be treated as a new application subject to the timeframes in SB 35. Attached to the resolution, you have your eligibility checklist. These requirements are pulled from SB 35 and the guidelines. And we just wanted to highlight two pieces of information. First, related to the 2/3 residential square footage requirement, we will use the definitions in SB 35 and the guidelines to calculate the gross square footage of residential versus non-residential development. The eligibility checklist also includes information about the city's below-market-rate ordinance, and the city's objective standards in this ordinance will apply to the project. Last week, we held a Planning Commission study session, and the Planning Commission provided comments on the proposed resolution and application packet. These comments were summarized in your staff report. And in general, the Planning Commission provided comments on the timing and completeness -- the timing of the completeness determination and oversight meeting, comments about modifying requirements, comments about correcting technical inconsistencies or inaccuracies in applications, and comments related to the density bonus application if the city -- if the application was -- the SB 35 application included a density bonus application. And that is my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, do we have any cards for this item? Okay, I have three cards. Jennifer Griffin, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Kitty Moore. Welcome, Jennifer.
My ear is still stuffed up.
There you go. Okay.
I consider this bill to be one of the most reprehensible, insulting pieces of legislation that has ever been sent down from Sacramento. I take exception to streamlined ministerial review process. It is offensive. It is demeaning. It makes me feel like I am a resident and I am stupid. I am disrespected by this wording. Everyone has been yakking about nimby, yimby, et cetera, et cetera. Doesn't anyone come up with the fact that though even the words in this atrocious bill are insulting to every resident in California, let's do some pushback here. I don't like to be told that I am so stupid, that I don't know my own business and my own city. Now, let's -- okay, we're talking about SB 35. This thing, it got amended again. I guess I don't know how you can amend a bill that got passed. But it is getting worse and worse as it goes along. It is causing tremendous political upheaval in every city in California. Now, is that what they wanted at the Sacramento level? Is there some secret agenda to take over the entire state? I don't know if that's true. But this bill is causing day-to-day problems in every single person's life. My mother, who's of an advanced age, knows all about this bill. I'm really glad she does. She talks to me about it all the time. Well, you know, and she doesn't think it's such a great bill either. Well, let's first of all, take out this offensive streamlined ministerial review. Let's get rid of it. Okay, Sacramento, you just insulted every resident of the state by doing this. Let's first of all, take that out. It is as offensive as being called a yimby, or a nimby, or an idiot, or something like that. So let's get rid of that jargon. I find it offensive. Also, SB 35 has no thought for the effects that it's going to lay out on every city. No effects to the schools. They want to build a 44-story building on unstable slopes in Santa Cruz with no -- with ministerial oversight so Sacramento knows where every unstable cliff is in Santa Cruz or San Diego. Well, anyway, I find this bill objectionable. The density bonus is objectionable.
So please finish up.
The fact that they want to -- and I bet you they want to cut down every oak tree in California. This bill is as reprehensible
Please finish up, Jennifer.
-- as anything that has ever been put into legislation. Please take out that offensive language. Thank you.
Lisa Warren, followed by Kitty Moore. I see what you said there, Lisa. You need to stand up there with Kitty if you want to do this. Welcome.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Planning Commissioner Kitty Moore. I'm here representing myself only, and Lisa Warren has seated her three minutes. So I've gone through the supplemental city council staff report. The -- the one that's in your desk items, which has additional information. So the first item that I would like to see altered is your resolution. And I would like to see a Section 9 added. Okay. So I sent a copy of my changes to all of you, and the -- my edition has everything in bright red for you to see. So you can have an appeal procedure added in. If you look at SEQA Guidelines 1506-1E, "When a non-elected official or decision-making body of a local lead agency decides that a project is exempt from SEQA," that would be the city doing that, "and the public agency approves or determines to carry out the project, the decision of that project is exempt, may be appealed to the local lead agency's elected decision-making body," that's you if one exists, "a local lead agency may establish procedures governing such appeals." The appeal procedure could be established as follows. "The time limit is established by SEQA Guidelines 1506-2D. The filing of a notice of exemption and the posting on the list of notices starts a 35-day statute of limitations period on legal challenges to the agency's decision that the project is exempt from SEQA. If a notice of exemption is not filed, a 180-day statute of limitations will apply." As you know, with the Valco Town Center project, there, as you now know, there was a notice of exemption filed at the county, and we were not informed of it. So our 35-day period began, and we could not challenge it because we were not told. Item two that I suggest is how is the public to be noticed? So I just gave you an example of where there's a failure in the noticing period and how will this be rectified in the future. Three, how is an appeal to the elected decision-making body made? So my suggestion would be that you make some changes to the Cupertino Municipal Code to codify this. And what is the difference between the appeal, this is just a general question, between the appeal mentioned in 1506-1E above and the legal challenge mentioned in 1506-2D? So then going through that whole package, I do have a question regarding page three. There's -- you actually made the BMR requirements more lenient than what they are in the -- between the general plan and the below-market-rate program. On page four, I would like you to add pending Valco-specific plan required for the Cupertino General Plan Vision 2040 to your list of potential sources of objective standards. Now, item seven on location, "The project must be located on a property that is outside each of the following areas." I find this language very curious because when I go to the applicant's paperwork from March 27 of 2018, far in advance of the changes to AB 101, they use the same language. "The project is not located within any of the below-exempt areas," or actually, at the start, "is the project located outside of all types of areas exempted from SB 35." That's not actually how SB 35 is worded. It asks if it's a hazardous waste site that's listed pursuant to Section 65962.5, or a hazardous waste site designated by the Department of Toxic Substances Control. So when you say, "Is it outside?", you're actually changing the statement, and you're editorializing it. So -- and I have one minute left. Okay.
Is that her first three, or is that six?
No, that -- yeah, she has one minute left. And then we probably will have some questions.
Okay. So there's a section that you have on the density bonus units. I went to the Berkeley site. They have a different procedure on how to do the calculation for your density bonus. So what they do is find the average square foot of the proposed project. They have a baseline project. They calculate based on how much BMR they provided. If they made the maximum, the 35%, they multiply that times the existing average square footage, and that tells them how much new additional square footage they get to have. In our large Valco SB 35 project, they did not do this type of calculation at all. I have 15 seconds.
While she's looking, I'll mention that the page numbers are 1 through 18, but they are not numbered correctly. They go 1 of 17.
No, we can't pick you up when you're --
Okay. You mentioned Phase 1 report, Phase 1 and a Phase 2 environmental site report. I'm concerned about how the city would have control of those reports being made. Is the city a lead agency at this point, or is it just going to be the developer doing that?
Okay, please finish up.
Also with the -- I have some additions for the Affordable Housing Plan and --
Page numbers.
Yes, and page numbers are --
Are your suggestions in the email you sent, like it's six?
Are these -- this is --
Yeah, there was an email sent earlier.
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, finish up and --
Okay. So just a couple items on the -- you need to show the dimensions from the curb to the property line, and you need to make a determination if it's a final curb line because you have a project where you've moved it.
Okay.
Good?
All right. Don't leave, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
When you mentioned the Berkeley -- how Berkeley
Yes.
-- calculated it.
Yep.
Does SB 35 say how you have to calculate it, or is it up to each
Okay.
-- city to determine it? I mean --
Each city has their way of doing things. So for instance, even like for concessions, you could codify a height. You could say, "You're only allowed to add 20 more feet for height." So you could do that aspect. And there's a white paper, which I had sent to city council a little while ago, which went over, I don't know, maybe 30 cities, and talked about how each one did it a little bit differently. But so what Berkeley's done here is -- well, what's interesting is that they didn't take a concession on the size of the units.
Right, yeah, I was going to ask about the concessions.
Yeah, they didn't do that. And that they are also constraining the square footage that they're allowed to increase. I think that's kind of interesting. So they're making it so that the new units are going to be similar in average square foot when they do that.
Right. And then for AB 101 and the changes they made to hazardous waste sites.
Yes. So they -- there, if you look at the bill analysis, the most recent ones that went to the Senate and the Assembly, in those, they've added the -- they've kind of editorialized from what you actually read in the law, and then there's their interpretation of it. And there, they're saying things like outside of these sites, but it's not actually how the text is written.
Right.
So that was their intention, they needed to write it a little bit differently. And then when you look at -- when you look at the SEQA statute and guidelines, they're saying, "Is it on any list pursuant to 65962.5?", and that's like the disqualifier.
Right. But they're trying to say, "Oh, it can be on that list, but now it can be cleared by one of those other agencies."
Okay, so the problem with that is that you could have a site where a portion of it has been allegedly cleared, but you still have Freon 22 sitting on the site that needs to be cleaned out of the pipes and have checked the ground, the soil, see if that's clean. You can have an automotive center that has just basically been vacated, still sitting there. You know the site's not clean. You might have, which we do, the potential for having various underground storage tanks from having farm equipment that, you know, you have a gas, basically your own gas station.
Right, but if it's clear -- so you're saying it's cleared, but it's not cleared by everybody, or what?
It's clear, but it's not clean.
Okay.
And they'll say it's clear, for instance, like the JCPenney portion, they could not clean up all the soil. They had to leave some of it because it was too close to the foundation. So they couldn't remove it. They know that there was toxic soil still there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I hope I didn't catch you. You said, page three, you said the BMR requirement is not as strong as the city code?
Correct.
Right.
So what happened was that you have the requirement to have 50% be below-market rate, and that means that it would be affordable to moderate rate. Okay, so our Cupertino General Plan says that you need to have 15% be BMR if it's rental. Okay, so that is sitting in the general plan. And then when you get to the below-market rate Resolution 15037, that's a city council resolution, it then says that it needs to be 60% very-low income and then 40% low-income and not the moderate income. So what the developer would then do is only do the 15% from the general plan, say, and then anything above the 15%, they would then make moderate, even though our below-market-rate program says that it would be a 60-40 split. So ours is stricter.
And I will say that staff is looking more closely at the BMR sections in that -- in the draft, and I imagine there'll be further changes.
So also in the checklist, is there something that addresses this noticing problem?
May I speak about that?
Go.
Okay. Oh, go, or no?
No.
Go? Okay.
Quickly.
All right. So I did send a letter in the wee hours of the morning about the noticing for Valco. I also spent $94 at the Santa Clara County Clerk Recorder's Office obtaining all of the notice -- notices that were filed there. So I did a public records request of the City of Cupertino to ask for the SEQA declaration and the notice of exemption for Valco SB 35, and I told that there was none. And I was -- I can quote it. Well, here's the SEQA document declaration filed October 3, and here's the notice of determination. If this could zoom out a little bit, please? Okay. So I was told regarding your first request, there was no notice of exemption filed on October 3, 2018.
By who?
By our city clerk. Okay? Oops, this is the notice of determination. Hold on, let me get you the right one. There you go. Notice of exemption. That does not exist. So this began a 35-day challenge period for the residents. So I'd like to know where this was noticed so that we could challenge it. And then it looks like, when I look at the SEQA guidelines, that we could have appealed it to the city council. So if we disputed this decision, we could have gone to you, had we known it happened. So does that explain it?
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
I guess first I'd like to clarify one thing, that Kitty Moore has to, out of abundance of caution, has to recuse herself for the Planning Commission meeting, but then it is okay for her to make public comment at the council meeting? Is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I want to clarify that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you for coming here. And regarding the section you would like to add for the appeal, so it's only appeal for the SEQA exemption part, not an appeal of the project approval, right?
Correct.
And so this checklist, we are not approving the checklist, right? The checklist probably will be a living document that the staff will be adding as things change.
That's correct. The application forms will be, which includes the application checklist, will be maintained by the Planning Department.
Yeah, because we don't want to approve
As proposed.
-- a resolution, and then we change BMR percentage. We have to come back and change this resolution.
That was the idea, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So you're going to bring -- this is just a study session, so you will bring something back
Exactly.
To us, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Are you done? Does anyone else have?
I have a question on concession that other people can ask first.
Okay, John?
Of course, I've got some concern, you know, that perhaps we do need to be following some of these issues that have been raised and make sure that we're very careful. You know, we have a duty to not -- to not -- we have a duty to not allow things to take away from what the residents have a right to because we didn't check things correctly, we didn't notice things correctly. I mean, we need to make sure that the community is served. Yes, we have to follow all the laws, but being ignorant is no excuse. And so I'm glad that we're doing this study session. A little bit surprised that some of these issues need to be brought up. to be brought up outside of our city review process that we're doing, but that's okay. They've been brought up. The ones that I would, you know, or one I would really, you know, be concerned about is making darn sure that whatever we can do to make sure the SEQA aspects are intact, because not doing that means our community is at risk. If we could have found things that, whether it's hazardous waste sites or anything of those things that SEQA is truly meant to catch and protect a community, and that we need to make sure that we don't inadvertently miss these things when it's sending something through a ministerial approval, and then after the fact, we find out, you know, they find contamination or other things that should have been caught are, in fact, gonna be caught upfront. So, I would really wanna say, please put in as much effort as needed to make sure that we really do understand how to implement this without inadvertently missing things. I also would like to just say, for things that conceivably could be confusing, how to calculate the two-thirds, I think it's very important for us to have one or more examples so that it's gonna be easier to understand. Yes, this is how it's gonna be calculated, as opposed to all textual, which says, you know, you do this calculation, you do that calculation. Give an example. This is the size. This is how it's divided up. This is the square footage per unit. This is multiplied times this factor, and this is the end result. And if there's more than one type of buildings, per se, maybe mixed use versus all residential, and there's shared space, I mean, making it very clear how those things are gonna be divided up so that staff, which is needing to work fast on a ministerial approval, will be able to look at these as reference calculations and say, bingo, yes, it matches, it matches, it matches. That's what it comes up with, as opposed to being left to try to discern what the textual description means and coming up with something that may not be truly what was intended. So, I hope, I hope we make sure that we protect the residents, follow the law, make all the housing, 'cause that's the real intent of this whole bill, make sure that the housing gets addressed, gets designated, and projects can move forward, but that we have not inadvertently done incorrect things and the residents wind up being short-changed. I'm pretty certain developers are gonna be watching out for their best interests, and if they think, gee whiz, it shouldn't be 300, it should be 330, they're not gonna let something like that go by. I wanna make sure that we're not letting 330 go by if it truly only qualifies for 300. So, I don't know if you can understand what I'm trying to get at, but when we come back, I'll go over it again, you know, making sure we're very correct with how staff is to move forward. Make sense?
Thank you.
Okay, Darcy.
Question with regard to the draft resolution that you have here. You're not asking us to endorse that tonight, correct? You're saying that this is a proposed draft resolution, give us some suggestions regarding it, and then when it comes back for action, we will incorporate those suggestions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. So, I have three kind of large items, and I think that the checklist that we make, because of the fact that our discretion is essentially being curtailed to the maximum extent that they possibly can, that it makes sense for us to put a little bit more thought into it at the outset and try to maintain our discretion to the extent that we can. I think part of the problem that we have run into with regard to, A, the nebulousness, you know, in this entire procedure, as well as the very abbreviated timetable, is that there is a sense of too much flexibility. And so, I would say that instead of making it something that's a checklist that kind of morphs in accordance to whatever factors out there, and there are quite a few very compelling factors out there in the heat of application, if you will, that we try to make it as solidified as possible. That would be my general overarching recommendation here. And then, my second request has to do with the treatment of below-market-rate housing overall here. I'm a bit troubled by what's happened legislatively. We've got a budget rider here, and nobody caught it because it was a budget rider. This is not something that was specific to SB 35. It's not something that was specific to, you know, affordable housing. It was just something that was kind of designed to get slipped in there. And what did it affect? I think, you know, and I could be wrong, please feel free to correct me, I think it affected one project in the state of California, and it had to do with toxicity, and it had to do with the calculation of BMR units. Let's simplify the calculation of BMR units. If you are trying to promote the delivery of affordable housing, which this legislation is putatively meant to do, if you're trying to promote that, then what you do is you say, "Your residential square footage has to be calculated before you apply the density bonus." Now, what happens in the middle of this process here for Cupertino is that we suddenly find that there's magical legislation that's been suddenly passed as a rider to a budgetary item. And now, a topic that's been subject to months of debate, which is a long time, considering the trajectory of this legislation and the very abbreviated schedule of this project, what's now happened is that in the blink of an eye, we now have authority from state legislation, you know, putatively, that now says, "No, you're actually gonna take that density bonus, and you're gonna add it to your residential square footage." And so, that is gonna actually help you get to the two-thirds number. Now, if you really wanted to promote the creation of below-market-rate housing, you would not include that in the calculation, because that would actually make it, that would make it more residential proportionally. And so, I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about it not just because it is something that doesn't deliver as many below-market-rate units and below-market-rate square footage. I'm concerned about it from a systemic perspective. If there's a project here and a particular city and a particular project is being targeted, and somebody can just go and turn around and say, "Well, let's just lobby. Let's buy our way into this legislation at the right moment," then that, you know, frankly, is a little bit, it's a little bit concerning with regard to the basic overarching question of, what is it that we're doing here? You know, if we're gonna make our process so incredibly inefficient and so incredibly circumventing the idea of going to a neutral arbiter, right? Because we're in the middle of a case here. Circumventing that, I think that we, as a jurisdiction, need to go forward and say, at least in our recitals, here's a history of this legislation. Here's our position on below-market-rate housing. And personally, I support below-market-rate housing. I think that we need to encourage more of it, but the fact of the matter is, this recent change in the HCD guidance, and so, when it works to the benefit of the developer here, actually, you don't actually listen to HCD guidance, because that's what our staff decided to do, but then, when it works to the benefit of the developer and the law changes, well, then you can just ignore the HCD guidance that was made, you know, kind of midstream. So, you know, there are really fundamental inconsistencies here. I think we should put it in our recitals to these resolutions and give a reflection. Let the future know what happened here. Just, and essentially say, "Hey, look, you know, we're a bit of a work in progress systemically, but this is something that, it's horribly inefficient." And to put this under the guise of, hey, I wanna deliver more market, below-market-rate housing and housing in general, and then pointing the finger at us and basically saying, "These people are NIMBYs. They're just trying to stop all this," when in fact, you know, when you point out things like, "Hey, look, there's a tremendous amount of office here. There's gonna be a tremendous amount of jobs," you know, you're not making enough housing. You know, that's hand-waved away. So, I think that we should put this in our recitals and say, "Look, this is the history. We do support below-market-rate housing. If, at any time, the legislation changes, perhaps the state, you know, as a whole, takes a step back and goes, you know, perhaps we don't want legislation to be enacted in this kind of manner. You know, maybe we can put in our resolution, at the point where it becomes possible, let us not longer, let us not any longer consider the pre-density bonus within the calculation of residential, and that's something that we would support." So...
So, can we write a letter to the governor to object to his behavior of inserting these unrelated things into a trailer bill?
I'm concentrating, right. So, I appreciate the suggestion. I'm just concentrating on the language of our resolution here as when it comes back and what we can be doing within the confines of the discussion here, which I consider to be the resolution in front of us, as well as the checklist that we're operating under for SB 35. So, that's my second point. My third point is that I think, you know, Commissioner Moore, Chair Moore of the Planning Commission, in her capacity as a private resident, has some good suggestions. I haven't really wrapped my head around all of the suggestions, and I do have some, you know, follow-ups with regard to specifically the Section 9 she proposes with regard to an appeal process, as well as some pretty significant language in terms of the toxic aspect of it, the toxic sites aspect of it. And so, what I would propose is that our legal staff go back, examine it, and determine the feasibility of adding those suggestions, which were introduced to us, you know, quite recently. Other than that, I think that a good job has been done in terms of identifying, you know, some of the process points, and I would just generally adopt the staff recommendations and the checklist, as well as the attendant recommendations from our planning commission as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
So, I would just comment, I would echo almost everything Darcy said, except it would be nice if it were the case that SB 35 and some of these other housing bills, if the intent were to increase the amount of BMR housing, but we can see from the trailer bills that that's not really the intent. The intent is really to build more market-rate housing, as little BMR as possible, and in the case of this project at Cupertino, as small units as possible for that BMR housing. So, unfortunately, it's a fact of life. We have gotten amended. That's how we ended up with SB 592, and we have these trailer bills that kind of, it's almost secretly modifying something, because nobody, I didn't know about it. I mean, does everyone read all these trailer bills to see what other bills are being modified? Is there any notification that we get of this, or is it something we're expected to always be on top of, or?
Yeah, we weren't aware of these changes either.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, it's very sneaky, and I guess the only, you know, positive here is apparently the hazardous waste thing is not retroactive to this project.
And I'll say that's an issue that the judge will decide in the lawsuit, so it's not something we're commenting on now.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
So, the legislators were not even aware of the content of the trailer bill. The governor didn't consult.
I can't answer that question.
Okay. So, okay. One comment is, I feel that having this public oversight meeting five days before the deadline is a bit too late. I think, just in case, I mean, I wouldn't say SB 35 is so bad, because if we had good objective standards in our plan, in our ordinances, this just gives developer a clear guideline to follow. What's wrong with the VAALCO project was they submitted a project on a site without specific plan, so there was no height limit. There was no plan, and that was a problem. So, that was not really the problem with SB 35. I want to clarify that. But then, when we have future SB 35 project, I think the intent would still be, we want to help the developer to give us a good SB 35 project that's compliant, that qualifies and meet our plan. So, in case, just in case that maybe their calculation, we disagree with them, I think we want to let them know early, not like five days before. So, I'm wondering, could we have, because I noticed that in the Berkeley submission, their city sent a letter to the applicant after one month to say that they think, they don't think it qualifies, and here are the reasons why. I think that gives the applicant a chance to revise their project and resubmit and correct those. That, even if that restarts the clock, I think that's a good thing. So, I thought, maybe can we have one hearing that's like one month after we give an initial assessment. We are not married to it, but it's an initial assessment, then open the discussion, and then have this second one. Is that possible?
I think it's just a matter of staff having time to prepare and, you know, put the meeting together. I think we could certainly have the oversight hearing earlier than five days before the consistency determination is made. We can probably push that forward a little bit, at least for the projects that have the 180-day approval time for the larger projects. You know, we'll have to consult with planning staff to see for the smaller projects that have the tighter turnaround, how much further we can move that up. I think, you know, legally, you could probably have two oversight hearings. Again, it's just a matter of whether staff is gonna be able to do all the assessments and give the initial determination early enough for that to have a kind of an initial oversight and then a second oversight later. And so, I mean, my recommendation would be, instead of having the two oversight hearings, trying to move back, you know, move up the one oversight hearing so that it's perhaps a little bit earlier in the process. And I will say that once staff has an initial determination, then they can call the oversight hearing so that if they've determined it does, if they've made an initial determination that the project doesn't comply, then they could have an oversight hearing earlier. There's nothing in these regulations that doesn't prevent that from being happened earlier if the staff determines that something doesn't comply so that they could issue the consistency letter sooner.
I guess I was thinking, the two oversight, the first one would be mainly about the qualification under SB 35, whether it qualifies, some main big parameters. But then, the second one would be then about a lot of other objective standards that in our plan. So, that might take more time.
Yeah. And, you know, we might be able to do that if that's the way the council wants. I think that would be difficult on the smaller projects that have to be processed more quickly, but, you know, we could do it. I'm just saying that it adds additional pressure on staff, so it's something for the council to consider.
I guess we can make that optional, at least one, something like that. The other one is optional at the discretion of the staff.
Okay.
Right? Okay. Another thing is, I'm concerned is, there is, it seems, the developer, the applicant is able to submit multiple active proposals, and we are supposed to respond to each one within the timeline. So, I'm concerned about this very ambiguity, especially for streamlined project, which has specific timeline. So, can we possibly say, if you want to submit a revised proposal... So can we possibly say, if you want to submit a revised proposal, then your first application would be paused, so that we will focus on the second one, and we won't have to respond? Because under SB 35, if we don't respond, the project is deemed approved. And if they submit multiple versions, we will get so confused and then miss one.
Yeah. And we've advised council about that, so I'll let you consider that advice on that, in making those determine whether you decide to move forward with that.
So it's possible, this is not really trying to make it harder, it's trying to have good governance, so that we have a due process. We focus on one application at a time.
Yeah, and I think that if we want to do that as a citywide process, then that's something to consider, and I would just point out again that these guidelines are, you know, for the, you know, should not be adding procedures that are specific to SB 35 projects that aren't citywide.
Yeah. So it will be citywide for any project, right?
If you wanted staff to look at that sort of policy change citywide, we could work on that.
But right now, someone can propose five versions of a project?
To the best of my knowledge, without having looked into this too deeply, there's no city policy that prevents that from happening right now. I think it's just practical limits on the developer's side also, you know, it's a lot of resources on there to provide.
I do understand, I heard that it's possible for BMR project, housing project, they might need to propose multiple versions on the different grant requirement. So maybe we can have that requirement, but then we would allow exceptions with our discretion, right?
And if council wants to consider, you know, a policy like that, then we can talk about all the different permutations of it.
Okay. So, that's a thing, and then another thing is, with the streamlined project, I think we want to be sure we have all the information upfront, so that the staff has time to review. And for example, the concessions, I think we, usually the report for, the justification for concession is not required, but can we require them to provide justification upfront, so that we don't have to request that later? Because for VAALCO, it came like three weeks before the deadline.
So the, right now, in our application checklist, we'll be asking for a complete density bonus application upfront, and the justification for concessions and incentives is required in the city's ordinance related to density bonuses, so we will be asking for that.
So it's already required?
Yes.
So we already have required that, should be submitted at the time of project proposal? But how come it wasn't submitted when the VAALCO SB 35 was?
And again, we're not commenting on the past project, but I think what we're confirming that, yes, we're going to, it's either in this version now, or staff's considering adding it into the second version of the draft ordinance to require that upfront.
So we already have that now? Because I just looked at the Westport project, which is a density bonus project too, and they are asking for three concessions, but I didn't see the justification for those concessions, or maybe just I didn't find it.
And I think those were different types of concessions that are involved in the Westport project.
Density bonus.
Right, but the density bonus itself has different types of concessions within it, is my understanding. But we could talk more offline about that project.
So, yeah, the point is just we want to ask for all the information upfront. So I think, when the staff work with other projects, usually we would go back and forth, ask for other information later, but then we won't have that liberty with streamlined project. So let's take a look at what information we need upfront. One thing this checklist has is, we need sufficient information to determine the two-thirds of residential. What do we mean by sufficient? I think we need to be a bit more specific, what exactly we need in order to determine the use and the size of each area of the building, so that it's easier for the staff to figure out, and it wouldn't take too much guesswork, and, yeah. So if that can be provided upfront.
We can talk with staff about the, what information exactly they need, and how we can word that.
Okay. So you, we move to Rod?
Okay.
Okay.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I have two concerns, so although I've talked to folks offline, I'll ask it publicly. One is, does our planning staff find this process is proposed to be a workable process, for them to get their job done in an expeditious way? Are we adding by this process a lot of burden to what they're doing, or do they find this, you know, actually helpful and clarifying?
We've worked very closely with staff, creating these, both the procedure and the application checklist, and I believe they, Ben is here, wants to give the thumbs up.
Yeah, I'd appreciate just getting some perspective from our own staff on, you know, because you're the professionals that make this happen, so just briefly, if you can comment on that question, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Given you mayor, vice mayor, council members, and thank you, Councilman Sink, for your question. Yes, we work very closely with the city attorney's office in evaluating these timelines and checklists. We feel like the checklist gives enough detail for staff, enough clarification and direction to adequately evaluate a project within the prescribed timelines. So yes, we agree.
Okay. So you actually could find this helpful?
Yes.
Some better, okay, that's great. I know, the first time we went through this, it was sort of uncharted water, and now there's more known, so I appreciate this is something that you think you can work with and make and implement. My second question is, is there anything in here that we're doing by having council overlooking this in any way that might cause us to be in further hot water with HCD or the state, as a result of, you know, frankly, last time, right, the council really wasn't significantly involved. We'd hear reports about what was happening, but we had no public hearing or anything. Is there any concern that our legal staff has on how this process may affect our interaction with HCD?
Well, I think the states made it clear that their preference would be that there's as few interactions or procedures as possible. But SB 35 specifically includes a provision that says that there may be oversight hearings held by the planning commission or the city council, that's in the statute. It says the hearings should be limited to assessing objective standards, and that those hearings should not chill or preclude approval of the process. And we've made clear in the draft guidelines that are before you, that that is also the standard under our proposed guidelines. And so I believe that the legislature, when they drafted SB 35, they expressly provided for oversight, and I believe the city council can provide that within the limits prescribed by SB 35.
Not making the determination, but sort of looking at the process and having staff clarify how they've reached certain information without taking, without being, if I can say it this way, told by the council how they must interpret.
That's right. I think everyone's roles are laid out very clearly in SB 35, and this is just a check to make sure that there isn't further questions or things staff might have missed. It's an opportunity for the public to hear about what's happening and comment.
That's good, right, so we want transparency through the process.
It does increase transparency through the process, yes.
So I'm appreciative of this effort, generally supportive without going through the fine-grained detail. Seems like this is a great step forward for us, thank you.
Okay, so, this was a study session, so.
All right, one more comment to add. I hope this is a requirement for all projects, that projects should specify the number of BMR units, but then also the size of these BMR units and the number of bedrooms, because it has been hard to find out that information from the plan before. And then the total square footage of all the BMR living space, so that we have an idea of how much a project really offer in terms of BMR housing, that would be great.
Yeah, and I believe that's in there, but we'll double check.
Okay. So I think you have direction for that, and there's no objections, we will move on to reports by council and staff.
Can I just confirm? I think I've heard consensus on a number of things, but let me just walk through it to be.
But we also want to go through the letter that we received from a resident, and go through all that.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Those items as well.
One letter?
I mean, not in this meeting, but.
Okay, so, so this, let me just make sure we're clear where we are. So we've had the study session, I've heard a number of things, I was just going to click through the things that we, that staff is going to go back and address as a result of your direction, to clarify, is that okay?
Sure, go.
So we're going to look at the proposed changes by Kitty Moore, and advise the council about those. I think, you know, we can tighten up the language in section seven, that was not intended to editorialize, as Ms. Moore suggested, and so we can look at that. And staff was already planning to look more closely at the BMR issues, and we had some of the same concerns that she pointed out. We will, Councilmember Paul, I had a question, when you said you want to solidify the checklist, I think we feel like we have gone through and tightened that up as much as staff can. We will probably be adding a few other things, based on comments we've received from the planning commissioner and commissioners, and tonight, but was there something else you wanted to make changes to the procedures we have before you now, based on the checklist?
Just as long as items can't be added or removed from the checklist midstream in the middle of a project, that was my concern.
Yes, okay, I see what you're saying.
For, in terms of the checklist, I do have additional comments. I think, in order to decide if a project complies with the general plan, we have a lot of standards in the policy strategies in the general plan, and even municipal code, that, for example, the bike plan implementation, and whether the park is distributed evenly, there are certain language like those. And I think, I find out that staff seems to need additional information to make a determination. So any such things that usually staff would need additional information to make a determination, let's identify those, and identify what information we really need.
Yeah.
And include that in the checklist. That will be for all projects.
I agree, and we've been working to do that. Let's see, we're going to add some information, I think we can add information to the, or discussion in the recitals, that talks about AB 101 a little bit more, and its history and its policy consequences. We can, and does council have a consensus to adding sort of sample calculations for how the two-thirds are done, so it clarifies that a little bit more, and not just in text, but sort of examples? I think we could do that.
I would support that. I don't know who made that suggestion, but I think it's a really good idea, not just for, you know, one side or the other, but just for clarity purposes.
And I think that won't be too hard to do. And there was also discussion about having, seeing if we can work with staff to move forward the oversight hearing, maybe five days before the initial determination might not be quite enough. You know, I think I'd like to see if we could do that for the larger projects that have 180 days to be approved, and 90 days for the initial determination, but, you know, I'm wondering if we could keep it the smaller time for the smaller projects, or the five days for the smaller projects, or if you'd like us to try to still move that forward for all projects to the extent possible.
Smaller project is 60 days, right? Larger project is 90 days. Yeah, so, okay.
So do we have council consensus that we want to try to move those, the oversight hearing a little bit, you know, say 10 days or something?
Certainly. I mean, I think, does anyone not support that?
Is 10 days enough? If it's a 90-day window, wouldn't you, I think the idea is, I would like the applicant to know what we disagree earlier, that, in order to help them, right? That's the idea.
And I think that there was density to be, language added that, you know, that it could be earlier if possible, you know, we could add, or, or earlier if an initial determination has been made earlier, is that?
Yeah, I mean, I think if, you know, some cases are going to be really complex, right? And you want staff to take the time to research the issues, to vet them, and not be premature in a judgment, but if there are straightforward cases where we can know earlier, I would leave it to staff's discretion to try to pick the, you know, earliest reasonable date that they can come up with.
So maybe I think we can have like an optional meeting for a larger project, if necessary? Because if most likely everything is compliant, we will need that. But when we need that, it's probably when we disagree with something, then I think it's better to let them know early, so they have a chance to correct it.
Yes, and I appreciated your language on that, that the oversight meeting would be at least one with a second optional meeting if, at the discretion of staff, if there's, if able to do so earlier.
You know, one thing, given the fact that square footage calculations are so integral and important to SB 35, it may make sense, you know, if 10 days really makes sense for all the other aspects of the approval, it may make sense to try to move the square footage calculation termination up to as early a point as possible, since it would tend to be completely preclusive in an SB 35 type of project, since the two-thirds, one-third residential to non-residential ratio is so central to the legislation itself. And I think it would also send the message that we would really like to be able to encourage the development community, as well as our own, you know, city staff, to make that a bit of a focal point, just to make sure if this, this most essential element of compliance is not really looked upon or examined throughout the process, I think it kind of says something about us as well. So, you know, if we prioritize that and say, you know, within, I'm just pulling a number out of the air, because 60 days is greater than 45, and 45 is halfway to 90, if you say 45 days in, you need to have the square footage calculation done, and we could hold a hearing just based upon that aspect of it alone, then, I think that would actually also give the community some comfort as well, so they can have a sense, a preview sense, literally based upon the most basic metric of the project itself, of what they're looking at, really.
That was my initial intent, was to decide the qualification under SB 35, so it's like two-thirds, or hazardous, or whatever other potential issues that's specific to qualify for SB 35.
But just, and I don't want to, you know, kind of like split hairs here or anything, the fact of the matter is, in this project, in the SB 35 project that's in front of us right now, we didn't make any calculations, you know, as a city, we didn't, we didn't sit down with any plan sets, and, you know, out of numbers, we simply accepted the numbers that were provided to us by the applicant. So, I mean, I think, lesson learned going into the future, it really does make a lot of sense. I mean, this is about square footages, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't put a 10 million square foot project, or even a, you know, 100,000 square foot project, you know, through, without actually determining whether in fact, these square footage numbers make sense to us, and us doing, you know, granular, you know, as granular as possible calculation, but certainly not doing no calculation whatsoever.
So I am hearing that we, you know, some, especially the square footage calculation, we try to have that, an initial hearing on that much earlier in the process, and then focus on the other issues, like consistency with the city's objective planning standards.
I like the idea of the examples, because especially when a space is shared between uses, how do you calculate, what's the percentage? Maybe some examples of how we want that calculated, I'm not sure if it's possible, but if there could be examples.
Yes.
You have a lobby in a mixed-use building that has both uses, how do you count that?
Right, and we could put, try to spell some of that out. So I'm starting to hear that there's a proposal, we had talked about maybe having at least one oversight hearing, but one earlier if, at the discretion of staff, but now it sounds like, well, maybe we want to have an oversight hearing earlier that focuses on two-thirds calculation, and make that sort of the initial first hearing, and then a second one later in the process, when that covers all the other standards.
I mean, that seems like the most basic threshold under SB 35, and it really makes a lot of sense to put it earlier.
And is there consensus with council around trying to do that? And we can confer with staff about the time, you know, when we can do that. And then we'll try to spell out more what it's, the sufficient information that we need. And then we'll try to spell out more what it's, the sufficient information that we need for doing that calculation and confirm that what we have now is specifying, is requiring applicants to specify the size of BMR units and then the number of bedrooms and that sort of information in the application. I believe that's out there now, but if not, well, I don't think it would be any problem to add it. So that's my summary of what we, the direction is.
The number of application at a time from...
Yes, and we'll continue to, as a citywide, right, so that would be a separate process for planning staff and council to consider. And you can work with the city manager about implementing that.
Okay.
And one thing to propose, I really like what Darcy said about pointing out the trailer bill, how this process has been abused to, for one project only, and the governor is doing that. I wonder if we can, as a city, write to the governor, or at least an open letter, to point out what's wrong with this. Most people wouldn't even know what's trailer bill, that would be effective immediately, how that process goes.
Well, I would point out, the governor already knows what's wrong with it.
But we, that we need everyone to know that he did this.
Okay.
And can I say that it's not an item on this agenda?
Okay, thank you.
I propose that to a future...
Okay, yeah, we can put that on a future agenda. All right, we really need to move on here. So we're on to reports by council and staff to report on committee assignments, John?
So the school two-plus-two meeting was postponed. As for other somewhat important, the Lehigh meeting I attended, and that was very well done. Met with the Chamber of Commerce, Anjali, to talk about housing and transportation. But then I'd like to touch on that, you know, we've been doing these city walks, the city manager and I, and we've been getting very good feedback, so alerting people, that the next one will be this weekend on the 10th at Blackberry Farm at 10 o'clock. Anyone who'd like to come and walk with us and share their thoughts, that's what we're there for. Also like to highlight that this Saturday evening at 6:30 will be our second town hall, and we all know that housing is a huge issue, huge issue in Cupertino, but also in the Bay Area. I don't think it's an easy topic, and we need to be sure that we know what the residents support. The items, you know, amount of BMR, should there be concessions if it's gonna have the mixed use? Should there be some units for seniors, should there be units for...
So can I interrupt you, council and staff comments are not now, this is only committee assignments right now. So, any committee you serves on is now, and later on you'll have the opportunity for the other stuff.
Oh, I thought those were at the beginning, beginning, and you skipped over it today.
No, I didn't, we're just getting, we're just getting to the committee reports now. We haven't even gotten to consent yet.
Okay, good enough, well, I'm finished anyway.
Just do your committee assignments.
Saturday night.
Darcy?
I've written out a narrative summary, so, you know, for the benefit of the public, I'll just give the names of the committees that I sat in on and the dates and the time they meet, in case people want to attend in the future. So, the library working group is meeting every first and third Thursday of the month currently, and we met on July 16th as well as July 18th at 5:00 PM in the library's think tank room. The upcoming meeting actually is not the first Thursday, it's the, I believe, second Thursday of the month of, I want to say, the month of September. But I'll confirm and modify the report accordingly. The environmental review committee has met twice since our prior council meeting as well. Those were on July 18th and August 1st, however, those meet at 9:30 AM in conference room C, which is downstairs in city hall. The other committees that I attended were the Santa Clara Valley Water Commission, that met on Wednesday, July 24th at noon, at the water district's headquarters in San Jose. And the audit committee met last Tuesday, July 30th, I believe we met at 4:00 PM, but it doesn't always consistently meet at exactly that time. So, in terms of the content of those meetings and some, you know, again, narrative summary, I'll submit that together with the item at the very end in one report, and I'll provide that to the city clerk.
Great, okay. I attended the West Valley Mayor's meeting the third Wednesday in July. The subject discussion was our shuttle. So we had someone from our staff provide a description of our plan for our local shuttle that we approved funding for. I left that meeting early and ran off to the South Airport Noise-South Flow meeting in Santa Clara, where the FAA attends, and for those not familiar with it, this is basically, grew out of a change in the way flight paths are done. It used to be that the incoming flights were spread slightly out, so not, so one neighborhood didn't get all the noise. And now everything's on what they call a rail, so all the planes are coming in almost on exactly the same trajectory, and it's greatly affecting a small number of houses, a lot, instead of a large number of houses, a little. And unfortunately, the FAA is under no obligation to change it back to the way it was, and these meetings go on and on, and it's basically an impasse. A lot of highly informed residents attend these meetings, and, but basically, it will take legislation at the federal level to solve this problem. I missed the audit committee meeting because I was on vacation, and I think that's all I have.
We had the Legislative Review Committee on the 23rd of July. So we, we took, we reviewed many bills, and we took some, I forgot what we did. But anyway, so you can find all the positions that we took on the Legislative Review Committee side, and the next meeting would be August 20, 20th, oh no, 27th, Tuesday. So everyone is welcome to attend. And I continue to have office hour booths at the Creekside Farmers Market, and I invited a different friendship city each time, and they really appreciate having the chance to reach out to people. And this Saturday, they will have a kids' fun festival in Memorial Park hosted by these friendship cities. And everyone is welcome to attend, okay?
Yeah, well, Stephen and I met as the San Jose Water Company Subcommittee from this council, and we will be bringing something to a closed session in the near future. Having worked on that for a few years, we will see if we can bring it to some fruition. We, as John discussed, we had a very robust community meeting on Lehigh last week. There were about 200 community attendees. Yeah, it was big, and I'd like to, like to notice everyone that the air district, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District on whose board I serve, will be here in this place on September 16th from 6:30 to 8:30. And we'll be discussing specifically air quality related to the Lehigh Cement Plant and Quarry and the associated truck traffic. So we're gonna have a good representative of staff here, from the staff here, talking about what's been done and what will be done going forward to improve air quality for residents throughout the South Bay primarily and the region. But certainly it has impact in Cupertino. And I can take my other comments a little later at the end of the meeting.
Okay, we are now on to the consent calendar. So Madam City Clerk, has anything been pulled from consent by any...
No, Mr. Mayor.
Does any council member wish to pull anything from consent?
I'd like to pull items 13 and 15. And if no one else is pulling anything, I'd like to move that we, that we move items 6 through 14, excluding 13 on the consent calendar.
What, excluding 13 and 15, right?
I said, I said 6 through 14, so...
Oh, okay, okay, 6 through 14 excluding 13, okay.
Right.
All right, so moved?
Do we have second?
I'll second.
Thanks, good catch.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so we're back to 13 and 15.
Yeah, so let me just ask a clarifying point on item number 13. So this has to do with our recycling essentially, so Recology handles our solid waste, and we're looking to potentially partner with Sunnyvale. And so my question is basically this, and I guess Recology's economic pressures are essentially driven by the fact that China's no longer buying our recycling, right? They're basically saying, look, we're not gonna import this stuff anymore, you have to keep it, and now Recology's had to do some stuff with it, which elevates their costs. My question is, and I'm all in favor of the idea of partnering with an amber jurisdiction in terms of, you know, finding good recycling solutions, but going over the report, I didn't get a sense that the public would have that kind of clarity as to what its fiscal impact might be. And so is there any kind of projection as to what this might cost the city of Cupertino or its residents in a long-term, you know, perspective if this smart station partnership with the city of Sunnyvale happens? I mean, just broad brush stroke kind of ideas of, you know, how this might impact us fiscally.
Yes, good evening, Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. The purpose of this report is so that Sunnyvale can include what our tonnage may be, so that that could be determined in the future. It references a report early this fall to where those types of numbers could come forward, but right now we would not know.
So we basically just have no idea, I saw the number 16 million in there for, you know, some kind of facility cost, but we really just have no idea what the fiscal impact might be on our city or on a per capita basis for that matter.
No, right now, no, that's just lets us share numbers with Sunnyvale so that they can input that into what infrastructure improvements they may need at the smart station. And then later on, if there's, if there appears to be some benefit for us to participate, you know, of course, we would report those findings back to council before we would go forward. But this resolution does nothing to obligate us to any future costs at this time.
Oh, no, no, and I completely understand that we don't want to put ourselves into an obligatory fashion early on, but I think that it would be nice to have some kind of sense of, you know, potential projected fiscal impact. And my only request would be, and I support this, I think it's a good idea, but my only request would be if this does, you know, pass, that in the next step, as it kind of outwardly faces the public, that we think about providing some of those fiscal numbers to the extent that we can, you know, get even the broadest of estimates as to, you know, what we might be looking at.
Yeah, I mean, one reference could be just looking at what Sunnyvale, you know, pay, you know, what they charge their residents for different collection of goods, of waste streams, so we could just compare to that.
Exactly.
But, yeah, they're, you know, if we do go that route, I mean, they do pay significantly more than we do here in Cupertino. I mean, they're probably 20 to 20, about 20% more than we currently charge our customers.
Right, which is, you know, I think kind of good to know, you know, from the perspective of, you know, the everyday user, so.
Right.
Thanks very much.
So, we're not getting that service now from Recology, right?
No, we, they're not taking materials to the smart station.
Right, so besides this, what kind of credits will our ratepayers be getting since they're not getting that service which we're actually paying for now?
What kind of credits?
What, right, I mean, in your bill, you're, I mean, the bills did not go down just because this service is no longer being provided.
This is for the recycling?
Right.
Yeah, I'm not quite following you, I'm sorry.
Okay, what is no longer being picked up?
So, so Recology is no longer able to do stuff with it after they pick it up from us.
Okay, I thought they were, I thought there were items that they are no longer picking up.
Yeah, there have been some issues with our household hazardous waste, curbside program, that that's gonna be coming in a future agenda item.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Yeah, no.
I confused those two, okay.
I think the only question, right, is, as I talk to city staff, it's not that Recology wouldn't continue hauling our three bins or something like it someplace, it's a question of where they haul to and how much diversion we're getting. And I, from what I understand from Recology, they are actually still selling to, some of this to Asia because they're able to sort and have a better, have a better product to deliver than some of our neighboring jurisdictions do.
Okay.
That's my, what I've heard.
And your other item, Darcy?
Okay, so would we move item 13 and 15 together then, if we...
Sure, yeah, why don't you do 15?
Okay, so, item number 15, I noticed that there was something like 100-plus-thousand-dollar, you know, budgetary increase requested here. And so I just wanted to, you know, just kind of get it more articulated out there. I support the project in general, but just in terms of, you know, why it wasn't anticipated, when, those particular aspects of it, maybe, you know, if we're looking at a lot of different bike improvements throughout the city, perhaps we can be looking at these estimates in the future. Well, not necessarily an eye on, hey, add 6% to all your, you know, contingencies, but something along lines of what can we be doing to, you know, sort of learn our lesson from this and perhaps make use of those efficiencies and, you know, things going forward.
No, very good, that's a good question. The drivers for this going from 10% to 6% has largely been with utilities that were just unknown at the time the design was being done. And so, you know, as we're excavating per the plan, the contractors finding these unknown utilities, they're not showing up in the utility companies', you know, record drawings as well, so it is causing some issues to us than when we go through and do our work.
Right.
You know, of course, that gets reported back to the utilities and their record drawings get updated, but it just doesn't help us at the time, so.
Right.
So that's, that's really what's been driving this. There's been a few other issues with trees and retaining walls, that there are some lessons learned, you know, when you start encroaching into the embankment next to the trees, and that affects the trees, that that could have been done a little bit better, so we are, we will improve that.
And then with regard to the utilities and their record drawings, are they under any obligation to us to, in your assessment, to provide us with accurate record drawings? I mean, because if ultimately this is part of their issue, then, you know, perhaps, not to say that, hey, like, you know, we want a nickel and dime everyone, but, I mean, if it's not all on us, I mean, and kind of a corollary to that question would be, in the future, if we're looking at a different corridor, is there something that we can do, you know, before the fact, knowing that this might become an issue, to coordinate with the utility companies to get a better sense of what's out there?
Yeah, I mean, the utilities are required to do a best faith effort to give us the best information that they have. I mean, the risk that they run is when they don't do that and then we hit it, they're responsible to fix their utilities and other costs associated with that. So they, they don't like that to happen on their side.
Right.
I think when we do get into projects where we're very sensitive about the utilities, we can do some advanced potholing.
Okay.
There's a cost to that, and we definitely do that, like on gravity lines where you just have to have that elevation and you're just checking things physically so we go through and do pothole, those are the kinds of things we try to avoid it. But sometimes it's balancing between expending all that cost upfront and having the accuracy versus doing what we did.
Well, and this is just a thought, you know, to the extent that these types of agreements between the city and utilities, you know, could be, you know, modified in the future or revisited, perhaps a provision in there that states to the effect that, you know, especially in the state of GIS, you know, we should be able to get pretty good accuracy, to the, to the effect that, you know, to the extent that they're not providing us accurate enough information such that this happens in the future, we're trying to put in, you know, infrastructure, that there would at least be some cost sharing or even some cost offset, cost transference to their side, especially if ultimately it's their, you know, schematics that are kind of leading us astray in that regard. So, you know, that being the case, and I'm assuming that there are no comment cards, Mr. Mayor?
I have, I have one comment that I'd like to make. I mean, I also talked to staff about this privately, and one of the things I've come to realize over a long time is, when Public Works puts a big number out there that they'll never poss, that they can't ever possibly exceed, right? We all freak out up here and we say, well, maybe not. I think, you know, Deb and Roger seem to be trying to, something new here, which is, we're not always gonna give you this big number, we may try to give you a more accurate number, there's a contingency on it, right? But I think the idea that has come up through a lot of discussion here in council is, you know, if we put a big number up here, the contractors all know it, and they're shooting for the big number, right, to be somewhere around there. If we put up something more modest, we may or may not get bids that comply, but we're more likely, I think, to do, get more, uh, value for our dollar. In other words, we'll probably, we may get some bids that really, because they know what that darn budget is. And so I'm really okay with the idea that sometimes, um, uh, I, I know you all as professionals hate having to come back to council, but I'm really okay with the idea that if we can get, on average, right, our cost down on projects, um, so we can get more projects done, um, I'm certainly willing to entertain, uh, periodic, occasional projects that, uh, you know, where, yeah, things happen. And so, um, that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from in, in watching, you know, bridges that cost twenty million and other things. And, you know, the community members that know about civil engineering all, all go, what, my God? And then we all go, my God, and then, so I think, um, while there should be some lessons learned, I hope one of them is, right, we, we do respect it when, uh, staff really is trying to be, be, come up with a method that helps us control our costs on these projects.
Okay, so you want to move those two items?
I'll move items, wait, oh, sorry.
Sorry, um, so can we, so the staff will talk to the utility companies so that in the future, we might consider a cost sharing if their plan is not accurate so that it gives them incentive to keep it accurate. Is it possible to start that conversation?
Yeah, we, we can start the conversation, but I've.
Or at least they should be notified it's a cost to us when they don't have, don't keep their plan up to date.
Yeah, but I think as Roger explained, right, when, if, if we, because they weren't accurate, you know, we break their stuff, they still have to come out and fix it. So they do have an incentive to try to be accurate.
So we need to let them know that it's inaccurate here and there, and here is additional cost for us when it's inaccurate too.
Yes, no, we, we certainly do. They're the first ones out there. And because, like here on McCollum, because it is multi-phase, we're, the next phase is, I mean, well, we're learning more and more about these utilities as we keep, as we move up and down the street, so we'll.
So, yeah, I, I asked this question already, but then I think another way you explained it was the, there is no increase in budget for, for this item. We are not asking for additional budget, it's already allocated.
That's correct.
It's just for this portion of the project. It went out for bid for this estimated amount. We calculated ten percent contingency. You could have made that twenty percent, but you were more conservative so that the, the contractor wouldn't think they can just try and get twenty percent extra. So, so that's, um, more conservative contingency, that's why it needs to come back when it's unexpected things happen.
That's right. A good, a good way to think of it, real briefly, is the, uh, the engineer, the contractor's estimate came in under our engineer's estimate, and then with, even with these contingencies and overruns, it's, it's still now just starting to, it is now bumping our engineer's estimate. And that's why we don't need the budget because we, we had budgeted for that.
All right, thank you. Let's close discussion on this.
I'd like to move items thirteen and fifteen.
Second.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so item sixteen was postponed, so we're on to...
Mo.
What? Right, sixteen's postponed, so we're on to item seventeen. We already voted on that, okay. Is there any way to turn off these lights? Okay.
Well, we are only twenty minutes later than the estimate.
Okay, so now the, the next item is a hearing to approve the lien assessment and collection of fees on private parcels resulting from abatement of public nuisance weeds and/or brush for the annual weed and brush abatement programs, okay.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, Kirsten Squarsha, Deputy City Clerk. This is the last step in the weed and brush abatement programs process where all of the work has been performed, and the county would like to recover the cost of servicing properties for abatement. Your action tonight is to conduct the hearing to consider objections from property owners that are on the assessment list and the, and to adopt the draft resolution approving lien assessments and collection fees on private parcels. And Mo, our representative from the county, is here to answer your questions.
Okay, are there any residents here to oppose? One, two, okay.
And one more, just, okay.
There was one more I ran into on Sunday, she, yes, on Monday, she's not here.
Okay, has anyone submitted anything in writing? Prior to the meeting?
No, Mr. Mayor, not to the clerk's office.
Okay, I'm not, oh, Madam City Attorney, I'm not exactly sure how to proceed on this. Do we have Mo?
Well, maybe you could advise on, or, I'm sorry, uh, let's see. So I would take the staff presentation first.
Okay.
And then, let's see, I guess I'd ask the county if they have anything else they would like to advise at this time, and otherwise we can hear from the property owners.
Well, I don't see a staff presentation here.
Well, I guess that was, so.
No, just, I was just reviewing the staff report and I'm, I'm finished.
All right, so I will call the, um, the three people. I can't really read this. Nagish Shilora Vimpathy, followed by Lance Chang, followed by Sherman Dela Cruz. Welcome. Uh, yeah, could, sorry if I mangled your name, could you?
No problem, no problem, I'm Nagish, I can shorten the name to make it easy. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members, I need a few clarifications regarding this program. The first one is you mentioned that the cleanup has already been performed and the cost is being recovered. Is that true? Because nothing has been done on my property yet.
Yeah, Mo, can you answer that?
Inspections have been completed, work orders have been issued. There are still work orders outstanding due to the late rains and the number of issues, orders issued for the contractor. They are still working to complete abatement. But anything that is not been done will not be assessed this, in this tax cycle. It would be a year later, if it's not already on this list.
I see, okay, so when is the cutoff?
Well, the, the.
For this tax cycle?
The tax cycle, everything has to be turned into the tax collector by the tenth of August, every year. And it has to have been through this public hearing, so if it didn't make this list,
Right.
then it was cut off and we couldn't go any, any farther. We can only go with what's on here, any, any additional work would be assessed next year and they would get it, another opportunity to, to challenge those fees at that time.
I see, okay. So does the, uh, resident have anything else?
Uh, yes, I do. So my name and, uh, assessment is on this list, so does it mean I'm going to be charged for this tax cycle? Because nothing has been done yet.
Right, I mean, according to the county, you would not be charged this tax cycle because the work has not been done, or because the work order's been issued, you will be charged this tax cycle.
Every property that was on the, a list that was approved in the beginning of the season in January will be assessed an eighty-dollar fee. That's the cost of conducting the inspection. Any property that was found to be non-compliant would be assessed the failed inspection fee as well, the four-hundred-and-ninety-five-dollar fee. There are also, uh, some properties for which work had been performed from last year and had to be rolled to this year, which is on this list, and they would have, any property owner would have an opportunity to contest those fees as well. So there are fees. What you have on that list are the fees that we are requesting to collect from property owners.
And could you specify again which property owner is protesting so we can see what the fee amount is that has been?
I, I haven't been told yet which property.
Sorry, this is eleven-eight-four-one, Upland Way, I believe.
Upland Way.
Cupertino. What, do we have a different, do we have two zip codes in Cupertino, nine-five-zero-seven-zero?
No, I'm sorry, I meant to say zero-one-four.
Okay.
So eleven-eight-four-one, I'm seeing on page three of the top with the assessment amount of two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So that looks like it's been more than the assessment or failed inspection charge.
This would also include work that was performed in two thousand and eighteen, but at a time too late to make the, uh, to make this taxable, or to make last year's taxable.
Uh-huh. So this represents work that was done in two thousand and eighteen?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
But I do have an issue with.
Okay, sure.
Nothing has been done in two thousand and eighteen on my property, as far as I know.
Oh, so you're saying they did not?
They did not perform anything yet.
For twenty eighteen?
Yes, for twenty eighteen or this year. Nothing has been done yet.
No, he said for twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen also.
What about last year? Because it sounds like there was.
Last year was from last year.
Okay.
I'll have to bring up the computer, it'll take me a couple of minutes.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, while we're waiting for him to bring up the computer, we'll go on to the next.
So one other question I have, so is, is this a one-time assessment? Or is it going to be, why is it being added to the tax? Is it going to be every year?
This would be a one-time assessment.
Right, I mean, but it could, if it's not in compliance again, then it would go on and on.
Okay, but I'm assuming that with this, it'll be made compliant for the year end. If we continue to keep it in that state, then it won't be assessed again.
Right, if you, right, if you can't keep it in that state, right.
And as, as Mo can explain, you're on the inspection list for three years, so.
Right.
There's a fee associated with that.
Right, so it's an eighty-dollar fee every year, Mo, to be on the inspection list. And then if you're compliant, that's the fee. If you're non-compliant, there's a non-compliant fee plus the cost, the mitigation.
Uh, yes, but the fee may not be eighty dollars next year.
Right, right.
It's reevaluated each year. Last year the fee was ninety dollars, this year it went down to eighty. Uh, the fees have to be consistent with what the actual cost of the county is. We are not here to make a profit.
Right, wow, I'm impressed that the fees actually went down. That doesn't happen that often.
True.
So do you, we, we can move on to the next, uh, resident while you're getting that ready. Lance Chang?
My name is Lance Chang. Thank you for letting me address the City of Cupertino Council. I'd like to address the properties on your, on the weed abatement list of number twenty-seven and twenty-eight. This is property number twenty-seven. And, uh, it's at two-zero-five-nine-two McClellan Road. And, uh, as far as I can tell, uh, there are no weed abatement issues on this property. The second property is two-zero-six-one-six McClellan Road. And as far as I can see, there are no weed abatement issues on this property as well. As far as the eighty-dollar fee that is charged for an inspection, every January, uh, when there's inspection, I do know that these, uh, this property, both properties were inspected December, uh, fourth, uh, two thousand and eighteen, and there are no weed abatement issues. And the inspection was performed by, um, an officer from, uh, the Sheriff's Department. So it should be on record. And further addressing the mitigation fees of, in excess of four hundred dollars per property, from what I can tell, no mitigation, uh, activity has ever been performed on these properties by any contractors. And if I've been charged, then I, I think that there is perhaps a corrupt system in this weed abatement, uh, program, uh, by the contractors. So, in any case, I'd like to have both properties removed from your list, and, uh, thank you for your time.
So, maybe I'm not reading this list right, but those two properties that I'm seeing only have an assessment of eighty dollars?
Yes, they have an inspection fee of eighty dollars, but I can't see why the inspection fee was charged.
So the, right, the inspection fee is charged every year for three years. Is that correct, Mo, once you're on the list?
Any property that's on the list was found to be non-compliant at least once in the last three years. They, uh, any property that has three consecutive years of voluntary compliance would be, then be removed from the program and no longer be assessed any fees.
Right, so when was, I guess the question is, when was, when were these two properties placed on that list?
That's what I am, I'm having difficulty getting the.
I will stand corrected if, uh, I was placed on the list two thousand and sixteen or two thousand and seventeen, and it has moved forward into two thousand and nineteen. I wasn't aware of the three-year, uh, rollover.
Right, okay.
And I, I do not have any information as far as two thousand and sixteen or two thousand and seventeen on these properties. But I can tell you about the mitigation, and that is that if I was charged a mitigation fee, I think it was erroneous because no mitigation has ever been performed on these properties, ever. And, um, if I was charged the fee for mitigation, then, um, that is incorrect.
Well, I don't have the la, the previous two years here in terms of any mitigation. So you're saying that the mitigation was performed by someone that you hired or yourself?
Um, mitigation was performed by myself. There has never been an outside contractor ever to, uh, perform any services on these properties. And I would know because.
Right, so, but, but you don't think you were ever charged a mitigation fee, right?
Uh, can't be sure, can't be sure.
Okay.
I mean, we, we pay a lot of taxes, uh, we're not necessarily, um, cognizant of what we, we pay, we just pay. And when it comes in at the end of the year, we just pay, and.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just saying.
Yeah, so I think that's what happened, is the, you're on the list and the eighty dollars is every year for three years until you fall off the list because you've been compliant all three of those years.
Sounds good. Um, I know that I've been compliant two thousand and eighteen and this year, two thousand and nineteen, but this is the first opportunity that I've had to address the city council on this issue.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So do you have the information yet for?
I'm, I'm having technical difficulties. I have a VPN and it's not connecting. Uh, I'm on the network and I'm putting in my key, but it's not working.
Okay, um, well, while we're waiting, Sherwin Dela Cruz?
Hi.
And what is, what is the address so we can look it up?
It's number sixty-nine, one-eight-eight-seven-zero-Tuck-Lavigne. Okay.
All right.
I've been a resident at Cupertino for over thirty years. I own this property. And I've been assessed this fee, and I've, like, uh, most passive owners, I just write the check and now I'm looking at the documentation. And I have the same issues that the two people prior to me stated, where you're charged a mitigation fee, that's what you call it, but no work has been done. I've paid for all the work for the, um, for the past three years. I use Frank's Yards Cleanup. I write a check for five hundred dollars because, um, I basically say, oh, try and get the work done before this time. So if I'm being assessed this fee, um, it's for work that they didn't do.
Right, okay.
So you, I would, you know, be very curious to see what the before and after, if there are before and after pictures, because. are before and after pictures, because the work that was done, was done by someone I, I hired. And not, and if they had done the work, then they're claiming credit for something they did not do, or they, they didn't do the work before it was done. It's just inconsistent. And it seems, what is consistent is the reports that were given by the two people before me.
So, it's po, so have you been doing this work every year? Because it's, I mean, it's possible that five seventy-five was from a previous year, and it was only charged this year?
No, I believe I...
Okay, Mo, Mo will.
Charges that are listed as five seventy-five would be the eighty-dollar inspection fee and a four hundred and ninety-five dollar non-compliance fee for not being compliant at the time of the inspection.
So that's a penalty, and not a mitigation?
Right, that's not removing weeds, that's a...
That's simply a penalty for not being compliant at a certain time?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
And I understand the county does take pictures when they do this inspection, and so Mo is having some technical difficulty, but I know that he has pictures to show.
This worked last night, but I can't get, it will not accept my VPN.
Are you connected to our Wi-Fi, or what?
No, I'm connected actually through my cellphone, which is the way I normally do it. That's what has the link, but it's not allowing me to connect.
Oh, what carrier do you have?
This, I believe, is Verizon. This is a county phone.
That should work here.
Yeah, that's a county phone. No, it says I have a signal, and I'm able to get on the internet, but my VPN isn't working. And I can't get into my database without the VPN. What I can commit to, and I would do this anyway, is when I'm in a place where I have a network connection to the county's network, is I can verify for each of these properties, and if they're right that they have been compliant for three years or more, their fees would be removed. If not, I will report back to the city with photographic evidence to support the county's position of either it's still valid in the program, or that the property was non-compliant at the time of our inspections. And if work was done, of course, we'd have pictures also to confirm the work. I don't know what's going on here and why I'm having this particular difficulty, but I'm unable to get into my network.
May I make a suggestion here?
Certainly.
So, just stepping back a little bit, under the city's code, the, you know, what we're doing here is that, that there's, if, if, after inspections are made, the county agricultural commissioner can abate the property and, and shall keep an accurate account of the cost of abating the nuisance, and that's embodied in a report. And at the hearing, you know, the, the commissioners appear and show the report, and then the city is finding that, that those costs have been incurred and may be collected on the assessment roll. And so I think if you feel like you don't have sufficient information at this point to do so, we could continue the hearing to a date certain when...
Well, on two of them we do, because it was only mitigation charged on one, eleven eight four one Upland. The other ones, one of them was the eighty-dollar annual fee, one of them was the eighty-dollar fee plus the four ninety-five non-compliance fee. But the Upland Way, I think the property owner, you know, wants, wants to see what was spent on mitigation, like in the before and, before and after, which we can't, we can't see. See, so we can continue this?
Well...
But if we continue it, then...
I can't put it on the tax roll.
Right, I know.
If we gave you a device with internet access, would that help you, or do you need?
I have to be able to get into a secure network, and so I need the VPN to work. I'm able to get on the, on the network, I just can't get my VPN to work, and I don't know why. I'm doing exactly what I did last night, and it worked.
Yeah.
So you don't, yeah, you're trying to remote into your files, and you're not able to do that?
Yes, because my database is too large to carry with me.
Hmm.
I mean, if you have someone here that might have the IT expertise to help me, I'd be more than happy to accept the assistance. If I can get this to connect, I would be more than happy to show the pictures that we have.
Right, I don't know. Our IT person is not...
I'll come and look.
Okay.
You never know.
Yeah, you have four engineers up here.
And I'm texting City Channel, see if they, the video department can help.
And I don't think the attorney can help.
Sorry.
Yeah, they have someone in the room.
So, gives me, gives me a number. Because that's what, when I check my notebook, it says that's what I am. I could try your Wi-Fi signal, and then, but I still gotta get the VPN to work.
I understand.
So we've been going another two hours now, so let's take a break until ten fifty, while we try to address our technical difficulties. Darcy and Liang and John, come back. No luck?
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure, go.
So my suggestion would be that we consider adopting the list for the most part, and to the extent we still have questions that, you know, we need Mo to answer, we continue those. But we otherwise adopt this list if, if that's legally possible, because I think, you know, the issue we have is if we have a carryover with this big list, things just add up.
Right, right, we can adopt everything except this one address, if that's possible. And that will have to go to the next year.
Is the city attorney good with this?
Yes, if you feel like you have enough information to confirm the...
Right, there's only one with a question, actually.
Except for, I believe it's eleven eight four...
Eleven eight four one Upland Way, and that, I mean, I don't know what to say, that will have to go on next year's tax roll.
The other one doesn't have a question?
No, the other two do not have question.
I thought he said he, or he did his own...
Right, but that was not, the four ninety-five was not the mitigation. That was for failing the inspection before he did his own mitigation.
Oh, so four ninety-five is not a mitigation fee?
That is not, that is not the mitigation.
So what can the property owner do from now on, he...
Right, make sure it's mitigated before the inspection occurs.
So when is the inspection date?
For the City of Cupertino, property owners are supposed to have their property abated no later than April thirtieth, and maintained until the end of the fire season at the end of October. If a property owner, any property owner believes that they can't make that deadline, they can simply contact our office, we'll work with them to, extensions if necessary, to allow property owners that opportunity to take care of it prior to our inspection.
So the property owners who, whose properties are on the list, next year they should abate the, fix the weed problem before April thirtieth and maintain it for, until October?
Yes.
And so they have the phone number to contact if they have any more questions?
They do, and we continue to remind them every year, we send them a notice in December, which gives them the deadline that it's due, and the information about the first public hearing that we do in January. And then we send out another notice in March informing them that in thirty days, we're going to begin doing inspections.
Okay.
And this is a county program, so if anyone thinks the program should be modified, they should contact the county supervisors?
Yes.
Is that, they, who made the policy?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So we need to make a motion to adopt the resolution with the exception of eleven eight four one Upland Way. Is that essentially, okay?
I'm sorry, what was that address again?
Eleven eight four one Upland Way.
Okay, I move that we adopt resolution number nineteen dash one oh six, approving the lien and lien assessment and collection of fees on private parcels, with the exception of eleven eight four one Upland Way, for the annual weed and brush abatement programs to allow the county to recover the cost of abatement, of abatement.
Wonderful. Okay. Vote with your lights.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. And for clarification, Mo, just before we move on, do you have a preference about when we rehear this? Do we wait till next year? Do you come back this year, or what's your, what's your suggestion?
That's a good, good, good question.
Well, because we can't hear it again before August tenth, it would have to come back to next year.
Okay.
This can only go to the tax collector once.
I see, okay.
I would like to ask the council to, for the record, to state that I am permitted to bring this charge back, should we produce the proof of work, so that it's not, I don't want the record to reflect that it was dismissed.
Yeah, I think the, the record shows that there wasn't sufficient evidence here at this time, but, you know, I think maybe you and I can work together to see about putting it on the next roll. I'd have to do the analysis to see if that's permitted or not.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to item eighteen, approve city-hosted town hall events and add town halls to the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen to twenty city work program. We have the staff report.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. Katie Nomura, Assistant to the City Manager. We wanted to bring forward the town hall events that the city has been hosting and has plans to host in the future, to make sure it was something that there was consensus for, and the council approved us to work on and therefore add to the work program.
Okay. John, anyone want to discuss this? Wait, I have one, sorry, I have one card before we bring it back to council. Jean Bedord.
Well, it's almost eleven, so this will be short. My name is Jean Bedord, and I live in Cupertino. I'm generally supportive of the town hall meetings. However, I have two concerns. First of all, Saturday nights are not a good time. I've talked with a number of people, and they say, wait a minute, that's family time, and we're not going to come out, regardless of what the issue is, to give input. That is, you know, you need to be thinking in terms of varying times, varying days of the week in order to have a good picture of what the residents want. Secondly, I am concerned about the fact that the twelve events add up to four hundred and eight hours. This is ten weeks, or two and a half mad months. Now, back in June, you approved a work plan that was frankly unrealistic, and you kept adding projects to it. So I think overall, the city manager and the council need to relook at the overall impact on the city's limited resources. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. So we'll bring it back to council now. John? What? Oh, I didn't get a card from you, sorry. Jennifer Griffin. Eighteen, welcome.
Excuse me, at least I wasn't asleep. Yes, I didn't think I was going to talk about this, but I have been going to the town hall meetings, and I like the term that it's town hall, because that is something that started in New England, if you all weren't aware, that town hall system was, was something that they've been using for many, many years in New England. And I like the fact that we're having it, because, and you know, Saturday nights, I mean, if, this is a family night, too. I mean, there, there's a lot of nights, I don't know, maybe it's better than Sunday night, but some people would object to Sunday, too. So, yeah, I think it's a cool night. I, it, I think it's, I think that the topics have been appropriate. We have believed me. We've had some really lively discussions in here. And the, I, other than the fact that I have to pick a friend up at San Jose Airport Saturday night, and might go to the airport Sunday night to pick up my mother, I will most likely attend, especially the topic is housing. I can't think of anything that is more appropriate to discuss, and let's discuss the heck out of it. I mean, these are topics, this is what town halls are in New England. You talk about things, the public gets up and talks. This is a basic form of American democracy that came out of New England, and I'm assuming it came from the continent before that. But I welcome them. I think that it's a good, neutral, people can get up and talk about whatever they want to on the subject, pro and con, people from other cities, people from other countries. But I think that they're really, really good, and I really appreciate the fact that we're talking about topics that we're all interested in. And yes, come and get every emotion out, that's what they're for. Because I understand in New England, some of the town halls meetings can just be really, really amazing. They're loud, they're noisy, they talk about stuff, and I think Cupertino has the ability to, to talk about stuff, and believe me, there is so much stuff going on in this state locally, et cetera, et cetera, that we need to talk about stuff. So I will come, I may leave early, I may leave late, but I will come. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, and I don't dispute that we really have the ability to talk about stuff in Cupertino. Lisa Warren.
Hi, so I...
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
Yes, it's short. So, I also am surprised I'm talking in this subject, but not coming to a meeting is a choice. The comment made previously by another resident was, they don't care, these people don't care what the topic is, they're not coming because it's family night. Well, ironically, tonight was National Night Out. We should have all been with our neighbors, and we're here at a meeting. That was a choice, could have been at a neighbor's. As Jennifer alluded to, there's never a perfect time. Frankly, I think it's pretty impressive that we have city leaders that are willing to give up their family time to do this. And I was very appreciative of the first town hall meeting, and I'm glad there are going to be more. I think too much emphasis lately, and often, has been put on nitpicky little things, just to stir up shit. And frankly, thank you very much for coming on Saturday, and I will hope to be here as well.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. No more cards, we'll bring it back to council. John, since the town halls were your great idea, and they were a great idea, I'm really glad you did them, so you go first.
Happy to. So, my number one priority for being up here is to bring the residents into all the decisions that we need to, to make, and let them know that we do want to hear from them. Interesting, in Sunday's walk at Portal Park, one of the residents, never met her before, clearly said, I have always felt that the city is not listening or caring about the residents. And I pull out the town hall fl... or caring about the residents. And I pull out the town hall flyer and she, she grabs it and she says, I'm going to be there. So to me, the message is getting out. I think it was a challenge to get it going, and now it is. Whatever we can do to improve it, I think it's great. The, the other council members that would like to join, that's wonderful. I don't need to participate in them all. I felt inclined to want to do the first two to try to develop some consistency. And that was one of the big reasons behind keeping it on a Saturday night, at least for one more. Then if, if there is enough request for it to be on a different night or to rotate nights or things, whatever is going to get the most participation from the residents. And we can even make that be a final question or, when I went to, I think it, it was either Ro Khanna's Town Hall or Dave Cortez's Town Hall, there was actually, I think it was Dave Cortez's, they actually had a survey question at the end in terms of what you thought of the town hall and comments, things like that. And so we could go ahead and ask, you know, put the seven days of the week down there and put a check mark in the one that you would be most inclined to intend, or which one you would be the most inclined not to attend. So that being said, I've got a, a list at the previous town hall, the very last slide was potential topics. Again, intending for residents to look at those topics and then let us know which ones are the most important to them. Because obviously, we should work in that, in that order. And that's why the second one is going to be for housing. And then from there, we can continue on with the other topics. Hopefully, we will let the community know that we're here for them. Yes, even on a Saturday night, giving up family time. But this is something that we're all up here for. So I'm definitely in favor of it. The number of hours and the corresponding cost, 408 hours for 12 would be 34 man-hours per town hall. Probably most of that goes to several city people that will have to be here for, say, four to six hours at the town hall to open it up, to get things ready, put up a couple tables and stuff. 34 hours, not too sure what to say about that. If we put a dollar amount on that, 408 hours, $40 an hour, $16,000 over the course of a year for 12 town hall meetings, I think that's probably a pretty good bargain for the residents for their $16,000. And they can feel free to get somewhat two-way dialogue from us. We can't make decisions, but we can definitely communicate with them. And again, constantly be reminding of them that we are here to listen to them and take that information such that when we're up here making decisions, we're as informed as we can be. And hopefully raise the bar, not just for Cupertino, but let's let the other cities around us, you know, hopefully take notice and do likewise. So, so I say, let's keep going, full steam ahead.
I'm generally supportive. I'm happy to support this. It's not something that I use as a mechanism for outreach. Generally, what I do is if there's anybody who's requesting a meeting or wants to talk about a subject, I have an open door policy and will schedule a time to meet with them. And I, I've found that that's worked quite well in the last four and a half years to give a sense of what's going on in the community. And also, I, I feel fairly well-rounded in terms of the, the tenor of the sentiments. So I'd be happy to support this in the future. If there's an availability, perhaps I'd even, you know, participate in one of the town hall meetings. But I commend council members Willie and Vice Mayor Chow for initiating this, as well as Mayor Scharf for participating recently or in the near future. And I think that it's a great way to communicate with the public. Thanks.
So I also support this. Saturday night, I know Ro Khanna's meetings are always on Saturday, sometimes in the morning, sometimes in the afternoon, depending on the room availability. I think we can rotate the dates and times, day of the week, just to get a variety of people. Maybe the people that go out on Saturday night to do other things would want to come to one that's on a Monday night. I'm, you know, I, I'm not sure. Maybe we can have one over at the Donut Wheel, who knows? Where, where people hang out late at night in Cupertino since it's the only place that's open late. So I support this, and I will be participating in the one on Saturday night. And looking forward to spending my Saturday, Saturday night here. Thank you.
So, yeah, I think the time can be switched around. And even if it's, it's once a month, so it's not like we will be here or the residents would come to every county town hall meeting. They might come once in a few months. And I, I have a question about the video. So the first time we didn't record it. And even the Lehigh meeting, I, it would, it should, if we could have recorded it, that would be great. But it wasn't. So we are planning to record the town hall meeting?
So one of the reasons to get it on, on the work plan officially is to also establish the checklist that requires certain events having recordings. And so that's part of it.
Okay, great. And so the staff, we would expect to have eight executive staff attending? It was help for the first time, but then...
Depends on the topic.
That's, that's pretty costly.
That's why the, the estimate...
And Saturday night for the staff, that's their family time too. So I'm wondering, do we need all of them there?
It depends on the topic. It depends on the breadth of topics that we want to cover. If we want to have people available to answer technical questions, I think it's just going to be specific to town hall by town hall. So we put an estimate in there that was high, maximizing all department heads sitting here, myself and other key city staff.
So who would be coming to the one this Saturday since it's on housing?
This one was not, it wasn't on the agenda soon enough for me. So this one will be a council event technically, but still a town hall.
Okay, so no staff will be?
No, but we'll put, we'll pre, we've done all the pre-work for it.
Okay.
So it will be a council event, so the other council members can attend in the audience or not?
That would be a determination by...
Can we announce it so that others can attend in the audience?
It's August 10th.
My understanding, oh, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding that was that these town halls were going to be sort of more informal events with two council members attending. If you have three council members there, it would have to be a noticed public meeting of the city council. Which we could do as a noticed special meeting.
Even if two...
That's correct.
Okay. So even if two are the designated speakers, the other three could choose to attend, but then it will have to be announced as a council, special council meeting. It can be done, but it needs to be a...
You'd have to notice it.
Well, and you'd have to run it like a meeting with, you'd have to take public input and all the rest of it, I believe, correct?
Yeah, it should have allow public comment.
Right, we, we can't have three people here even if they're in the, even if the third one is in the audience.
So is it, so a town hall meeting, is it ever possible that all five council members attend, but then the topic is anyone people want to talk about? Is that at all possible?
It would be an official council meeting then.
Because you need to, under the Brown Act, provide the topics of what's going to be discussed. So I think that was, but again, getting back to my point that I thought that, you know, if the intent is to have sort of a more free, open conversation than keeping it to two council members can facilitate that.
As long as it's videotaped, we can all watch it later.
If it's...
Well, would that constitute a serial meeting is my question.
So I, I think we're getting pretty detailed here, so I'll look into the videotape issue.
Right, I mean, watching a tape is diff, you're not participating, it's just...
I think you could watch the tape later, but...
Okay. And last time there was coffee. I don't think we need coffee and tea during...
Right, that was not included as an ongoing cost.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else next? Yeah, I'm supportive of this too. I think it, it's a good initiative. Yeah, personally, I would, I would think people might prefer a Saturday morning or an afternoon or a Sunday afternoon to a Sunday eve, you know, a weekend evening event. But I'm, I'm open to whatever we find works the best. And I, I support the idea that we might ask folks on the way out, you know, if you were to come to a future meeting of a, on a topic of interest, right? What would your, would you prefer a week? It could be as simple as would you prefer a weeknight or a weekend afternoon or weekend evening? So we might, might collect some feedback that way. That would inform when we schedule these things. But I think it's a good idea. Just, all I'd say about this, right, through all my time thinking about Brown Act issues is we, we ought to be thoughtful that because you're with a group of people speaking in open forum, assuming it's videotaped, but even if it's not, we have to think about not, not being too clear about how you would vote, say, on some upcoming issue, right? We're supposed to keep an open mind until we've been through a hearing, we've heard the public speak, and then we get to deliberate. But we, we need to be respectful of that Brown Act until the time that we actually hear something. So I think it's great to have dialogue with the public. But I would be, I would, I would just suggest we all be cautious about being too prescriptive on how we...
Right.
You know, what, where we're going and what we will do, right? That's a good idea. We could take that back to council as opposed to, I think we should definitely do X, right?
So can we speak in general terms like I would favor more affordable housing without being specific on a project? Or I favor trails?
Exactly, exactly. So that's a good example of something I think that would be, you know, here's, here, here are the things I stand for, here are the things I'm hearing from the public that we could take back to the city or to the council as opposed to, okay, we're going to, we're going to go pass a resolution to do X. That, that probably is across the line from what I...
So you can say that you favor inductive cooking, right?
Yeah. I favor, I favor a trip to the French Laundry.
Right, okay. All right, so...
A question is, would we have like a certain topic for each town hall? Or, I think John is doing a presentation, right? So...
Right, we can decide. That's for each town hall, we will decide.
There might be a theme and then a...
Right, or there might be, there might be no theme for one of them.
Some might be, have no theme.
All right, so...
Okay. And then another question is, should, or should we provide maybe an update of what the city council had done in the past month, in case this is a monthly meeting? And maybe we can summarize for, so that people who are not attending all the council meetings, they come to the town hall, we have a short summary of what we have done.
No, I don't think we have to script the town hall meeting in this meeting right now.
You want to leave it open?
I think we just want to approve the, you know, so...
I'd like to move that the council approve city hosted town hall events and add town halls to the fiscal year 2019, 2020 city work program.
Second.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. How many out, let's see, what time are we supposed to be now? 10:20 and it's, we're only one hour behind, okay. Okay, the next item is to designate a voting delegate and up to two alternates in order to vote at the annual business meeting, General Assembly during the California, during the League of California Cities Annual Conference, October 16th to 18th in Long Beach. So who is going, madam? City manager, is it the, the vice mayor and I?
The vice mayor, you, sir, and I believe one other council member, but I can't...
I'll be attending.
Oh, it's Darcy, council member Paul.
Okay, so we need to designate a voting delegate.
I think it's logical that we designate the mayor. I mean, unless you're agreed.
Okay, I accept. And up to two alternates, so I would nominate, suggest be the vice mayor and council member Paul.
All right, agreed. Okay, great.
Okay.
Would you like to make that a motion?
I will make that a motion.
Second.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so in that vein, item 20 is a proposal to move the October 15th meeting to October 14th because the League of California Cities meeting starts early Wednesday, the 16th, and I would like to go to the sessions that start then. And if we have our usual meeting on Tuesday, October 15th, I would not be able to get there in time. So is there any objection to moving that meeting?
Yeah, I, I have a problem. And that is, I'm, I'm, I will be out of town on that Monday. I have a variety of personal and family things that, that take me out of town through Mondays, some weekends, and that's one of them. And I have to plan my schedule along in advance. So my issue generally, right, is I'd really like to stick to our regular meeting schedule. I, I've gone to this conference in the past. I think what you just do, you're the mayor, man. I think what you say is, we are going to have, if, you know, if the idea of flying down early in the morning is a, a challenge with a late night meeting, we just limit that, deliberately limit that agenda. So we're out of here by...
Yeah, actually, there's no, there's no, I would have to go in the morning. There is a morning flight from, from Oakland.
Actually, the meeting doesn't start and the formal meeting starts at 1:00.
Right, but the sessions, the policy sessions start earlier. And I want her to attend that.
There is, what policy session?
The policy committees start at like 9:00 AM. And so there's Wednesday, there's no way I could get there. Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Right.
We could have the vice mayor on the meeting.
Right, that's fine. Okay.
You can go early.
Yeah, so, yeah.
You know, yeah.
So let's keep them...
If we don't get out by hour X, you could take a late night flight.
Keep the meeting the 15th and then...
I'd sure appreciate it.
We'll play it by here. Okay, so we don't need any motion on that. We'll just...
I, I appreciate your honor and my, my issue.
All right, there's no more oral communications. So now we are on to council and staff comments and future agenda items. This is your time, John, where you can talk about those things from before.
So I'm glad I got to squeak it in earlier while we still had more, more residents, not only in...
Good job, John.
Not only in attendance, but that were potentially watching it from home. How many are still watching now? I don't think too many. So I'm finished.
Wow, okay, Darcy.
One's for the city clerk. So in addition to the reports, I could just pass these down. Appreciate it. Let's see, I, I just have three events to report out on. On Thursday, July 18th, I attended the Westport Project's initial environmental impact review public scoping meeting. I was at the beginning of the meeting to consider a project to deliver much-needed housing, including senior housing. On Saturday, July 27th, the Chamber of Commerce held an inaugural night market event at Memorial Park, which took a sort of inspiration from the night markets of Taiwan, but with local fare provided by many food trucks in the senior center parking lot, along with entertainment. provided by many food trucks in the senior center parking lot, along with entertainment at a stage placed near the senior center. It appeared to be well-attended by members of the public, including Vice Mayor Chow and myself, who along with Tom Pike of Congressman Khan's office were happy to say a few words. It also was very well-considered and timed, given the evening performance of Shakespeare in the park, brought forth by us of Shakespeare, its annual commitment to our city. All in all, it was a well-done event. On Sunday, July 28th, I attended a hepatitis B awareness event coordinated by two high school students from Cupertino, who formed a nonprofit organization for the purpose of conducting outreach on this particular disease that affects disproportionately the East Asian and South Asian demographic groups, which collectively comprise a majority of our population here in Cupertino. Jamie Chan and Studi Apodai had contacted me earlier with respect to holding this event, and I thank City Manager Deb Fung, as well as our City Librarian Claire Vareseau for their kind willingness to work with the students and make that space available for them for this event. And I have provided this summary, as well as the more detailed information regarding my report outs on the meetings to the city clerk, and that'll be included in the post-meeting materials available to the public. I'd like to request that we put on a future agenda, the request for potential expansion of the environmental review committee's purview, and some of my thoughts on that. I have been intending as the member of the environmental review committee for the last couple of meetings. I apologize to our mayor, I didn't realize that I was designated prior to this, during the year, so, but I, I'm happy to stay on, but I think the ERC serves a very important function, and I'm starting to get a broader sense of it. I think the reasonable, I think the requests are reasonable from the chair in terms of the potential expansion of scope, and so I think it would be interesting, at the very least, to consider those requests for the expansion of the scope of the ERC, thanks.
You done?
Yep, I'm done.
Okay, so, the only thing, other thing I have was on Wednesday, July 17th, following our 2:40 AM, July 16th council meeting, I attended a event hosted by The Atlantic Magazine, held at the Commonwealth Club in San Francisco. It was a panel discussion with myself, the mayor of Berkeley, and the mayor of San Jose. It was mostly about housing and building equity, and I, and I think it went very well. It got reported, not quite accurately, by some website in San Jose, and fortunately, our Brian Babcock was able to convince them to correct the initial report to at least slightly more accurately reflect what was actually said at that meeting. And I think it went really well, the questions were fair, they weren't trying to trip people up like some of the questions in the debates we've seen, the political debates, and very good event, they've had them all over the country, and that's it, thank you.
So, I received delegates from Xining, Hubei Province in China, and then another group of teachers from Shanghai, and I showed, so the first group I took suggested that they go to the History Museum to see the early PC exhibition, and they were really impressed. And then they, both groups attended, also visited our library and watched the automatic book distribution machine. And then we, then on the 31st of July, I attended a municipal cannabis policy workshop and learned about the different cannabis policies other cities are considering. And so, then I learned Berkeley has some regulation on advertisement for cannabis, since they are, they appear on billboards everywhere right now. And I also attended the night market organized by Chamber, and it was extremely well-attended, a lot of people, so it's, I hope that we will, we will have that more often. I was just disappointed that, I thought it would be, there would be food from Taiwan Night Market there, but then there are mostly food trucks of, just, but then, but then there are not enough tables, so many people, we don't have enough tables for people to sit on. And another issue is there are no designated handicapped parking. It seems there are places people can park, but it's not marked, so for someone who need that, they wouldn't even know where it is. And most of the parking lot inside for the park were empty, but then they are blocked, no one can even get in there, so maybe that's considered how, so I don't know whether that's the reason not a lot of seniors were there, but a lot of energy, a lot of young people, so great event. Yeah, so, I guess...
That's it?
That's it, yeah.
Okay.
I'll also say, you know, for a first-time night market, I know the folks at the Chamber had no idea what sort of crowd they could expect, but I came at, what, maybe 6:30 on Saturday, and the place was mobbed, it was just fantastic, so I, you know, crowd management is always an issue, but I'd, I'd like to thank the Chamber for making that event happen and congratulate them on the great success. I attended the Linda Vista music event that Parks and Rec had. The band was Patron, and they got the crowd up and dancing, so hats off to our Parks and Rec Department for, for that event. I was at the Hyatt House grand opening event, so it was fun to see the owners there. I'd actually voted against that project some years ago, because, believe it or not, because I said, you know, I don't think that selling toiletries and bottles of...
It was retail.
Constituted retail, I was, it was a four-to-one vote at that time, and I reminded Edward Chen of that, but I said, I was very glad that his hotel was, had come to fruition and is looking to be successful. As I mentioned, the Lehigh meeting, I'll just reiterate again, the date for, what I think we're going to brand as our town hall for September, will be September 16th, Monday evening from 6:30 to 8:30 here, and we'll have Air District staff on hand to give a few presentation, or a presentation, and then go into Q and A. I've also been talking to electeds throughout the Bay Area, so various folks on how we address funding for what's obviously a deficiency in our transit network. And I will tell you that everyone I've talked to is not happy with the idea of a 1% sales tax that's been pushed as faster Bay Area by the business community. Everybody thinks that we've, that our voters are exhausted from sales taxes. Some are proposing that we look at business tax measures. Stephen and I, you were quoted in the newspaper as talking about this at the Atlantic Conference, but I think everybody's fairly exhausted, whether it's council members and supervisors in Contra Costa County, in San Mateo County, who I've talked to, and our own county that I've talked to. I think people are pretty exhausted of sales taxes, a means of raising revenue for transit, so I want you to know that I've been having those discussions with other electeds to see if there's perhaps an alternative that, that might be considered for the transit we desperately need. And, that's it.
Oh, I forgot, I did attend the night market as well. I share the Vice Mayor's disappointment with the food selection, I was hoping for stinky tofu, they did not have any. No, I like it, I actually do like it. And then after the night market, I came back and I went to the Shakespeare play at the amphitheater, that was extremely well-attended, and very impressed with the production, although they did have some problems with the microphones, it still was enjoyed by everyone there. And I did get a phone call while I was on vacation two days ago. It was clearly push polling for the sales tax and the mega measure that's being promoted by some groups. So they tried to qualify me for taking the survey, and eventually they said, sorry, you know, you're not qualified to take our survey. Well, they asked if you're an elected official, and, oh, you got the same call?
I thought they knew who I was.
No, they did not know who you were, you got the same call, okay.
Obviously, you know who I am, and they said, no, we don't know, I said, then, goodbye.
Right, so, obviously, they've got a selection criteria, if you're a certain kind of person, then they don't want to talk to you, if you answer the screening questions wrong. So, yeah, that's all I had.
So, I forgot future agenda items, so I support that we should consider expanding the scope of environmental review committee, although I don't think that's the most proper committee to consider environmental issues, because it's not a commission. And, but then we do need certain group working on those issues.
In the municipal code, the ERC is identified as the body that is going to be looking over environmental issues as pertains to approvals of projects, so that's a pretty limited scope.
But not making policies, so it's not meant to be providing policy suggestions, like planning commission, it's more like implementing...
It's much more limited, that is true.
So I'm not sure that's the best place, but then that's the best place for now, so that's, at least we need a group, it's good that Rhoda and Kitty are both there, and Darcy, so, great. And another is Plan Bay Area 2050 is being considered right now. They are looking at the growth methodology that will be used to determine the number of jobs and number of housing they expect for the area. I thought we should have a study session on that, so we are aware, keep keeping track. They will start to have committee meetings to determine eventually how to allocate the numbers. So, it's important that we are aware, because the Bay Area 2040 has a very aggressive office growth model, but then this area overshoot that model.
Right, it was way off.
Yeah, we are building way more office than the amount they even expect, and now the housing is, cannot keep up. So if they are using the same model again for 2050 and not considering distribution of office, then we are just making the same mistake, so we should start studying that. So can we have a study session, so we...
Right, we can agendize that.
And then they are, the deadline to comment for the methodology is September 16th or 19th.
Like September 19th, I think.
Okay, so we better do that, it's very soon.
So if we want to send in something from the city, we should start looking at that.
Yeah, I think the Legislative Action Committee can prepare something first.
But our meeting will be after that, our next meeting will be after.
We'll figure it out.
Right, we'll figure that out, okay.
Another thing is, in terms of transit, I find out that Milpitas will consider a personal rapid transit system, and the meeting will be on August 8, 6:30, they will have a community meeting on that. That's a small part that's go over going on the rail, so it's interesting.
Is that it?
Yeah.
I have, I'll throw a suggestion in too. My belief is that the county grand jury reporting out on, making a finding on VTA gives every city that participates in VTA an opportunity to write a comment letter. I would appreciate agendizing a discussion on how we might respond.
Deadline.
Yeah, do we know what the deadline for that is, Roger? No, so, you know, very briefly, I think, I think we, we ought to comment on this and support the grand jury's findings, and specifically refer to RM3 as an example of completely failed governance, how that decision was arrived at with no public meeting at VTA is an example of something we could, we could add to the record.
So regarding the, regarding the letter that...
So that's, that's my, that's my suggestion, I don't know if I have any support, but...
No, I agree, I would put that on the agenda.
So regarding the letter I mentioned earlier about AB 101, do we need to agendize it, or maybe the legislative committee just work on the letter?
Yeah, we can work on that, because we also want to work on...
Maybe Darcy wants to involve that there may be two council members.
It's not AB 101 specifically, it's that process, but we also have the process of the gut and amend, which we don't like, but, you know, but the legislators love it. I mean, both of those things are ways to hide, hide their actions, and I don't, I mean, we can come up with a proposal in the Legislative Committee.
But Darcy wants to be, would you like to be involved? You made some very, very strong point.
If we, if we put it through the Legislative Action Committee, then we should probably have majority council empowerment do that, but we don't have that agendized, so we shouldn't do that here.
Right, yeah, so we can agendize that.
Right, we should probably get that agendized.
Okay. All right, so, if there is nothing else, I will adjourn, and I will adjourn in memory of the, all the gun violence victims we've had in the past couple of weeks in Gilroy, El Paso, and Dayton.